Yeah, but there's like so much. It's funny how it performs together. You know, and now we're coming to the side. She's from down the commission. Yeah, her friend, her aunt. Yeah. It's, it's a moment to get there. Yeah, yeah.
I thought he said. To this person, this is where I'm dirty.
I thought he did John Seaton was coming.
Yeah, and then he was blocking the road. He's been banned down here.
Oh. Oh, yeah, yeah. Just a minute.
No, it's behind you.
Focus it on Dave.
I have a couple of questions really. About me as well. Come from the highest release. Or this is what I told him.
Focus it on yourself.
I see you all the time.
I know. Oh, it's okay.
How are you doing, Don?
We're it's rolling.
Okay, it's, uh, time is, uh, seven oh eight. I'm gonna, uh, go out of recess. We had a non-public few minutes ago and now we're in a public, private session of the, uh, Dunbar Motorcycle Meeting. Uh, I'm gonna start off with some, uh, old business. We have minutes. Old business. Yeah, I did that already. But I'll do it again.
They weren't here to show them properly.
Okay. We have three second present. We have the town minister present. We have, uh, the town secretary working for us, recording for us, and we have Don, uh, up in the back. Having a video for the residents of the town. And, uh, the only, uh, if you have comment, we have going, we have two public comments. If you have something to say to us, please just, uh, say, say your name for the record so we can get it down. There was a hand, there's a sheet going around with your name so we can get that down too. We just wanna get recorded for the, for the minute so we know who's speaking and what we're speaking about. Okay, gentlemen.
Okay, a motion to accept the amended minutes for the July twelfth, uh, meeting.
Uh, is that non-public you're talking about, Paul?
No.
Seven P M.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes.
I'll second this motion.
Any further discussion on the minister? You have a chance to read them. All in favor?
Aye.
We have three of them.
I'll share with you again. I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, seven thirty-nine non-public meeting minutes from July twelfth.
I'll second those. Any further discussion on those non-public minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. End of next motion, Don. I can, uh, a motion to approve, and I think they were amended soon, but to approve the, uh, eight oh eight P M non-public minutes of July twelfth, two thousand eighteen.
I'll second his motion.
Any discussion on those minister?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. I'll make the motion to approve the eight thirteen non-public minutes from July twelfth, twenty eighteen.
Were those amended today?
I don't think those were the last ones.
No, they were not.
They were not, okay. And I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion on those minutes, gentlemen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just stay there and do public comment.
Yeah. Paul, come here.
Yes.
You're on the schedule tonight, so we're gonna open a public comment that you're already in the, uh, schedule tonight, uh, per your email.
Okay.
Um, okay, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. This is where if you have something to say or value to us, that would be helpful, please, uh, sound off. Just with your name and, uh, public comment, I'll start around anything. Second row.
Yeah, Jeff Crosby, road agent. I just wanna make a general comment. Hit kind of a, what I consider a little bit of a low point. Uh, somebody removed a blind person a head sign down in the Dunbar Pond Development area. I just think that's pretty low.
Must be out of town, sir.
I don't know, man. We'll put it all back up.
Okay.
The residents, but I met with today and I just thought that was.
Pretty low.
Stop signs, we, you know, we take those streets.
You met with the residents?
Hmm.
You met with the residents?
Yes.
Will it take you a while getting new one in?
I'll order it tomorrow.
Take a couple of weeks or so?
Yeah, they're pretty fast sometimes. We get through the prison, but I just wanted to make that general comment again. But I thought that was, I understood. I don't know why or what. We looked around, we couldn't find it laying down in bushes or anything, so I don't know. That's it.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Doug Rodger, Chair of the School Board. I just kinda wanna give you guys a little update. I'm sure everybody's kinda heard, um, about our million dollar meeting. Uh, we did go to the, um, we did go to the courts. There was a petition of a D R pool to, um, dismiss it before it was heard. And, uh, the judge pretty much said that, uh, there was no standing for that kind of petition. It wasn't a court. It was just a hearing, um, so he basically judged it on the, uh, RSA's. Sorry, it's the end of the day. Um, and he, uh, commended the board for trying to do the right thing. We just didn't meet the criteria for an emergency meeting. Um, just for, you know, information, um, the two, we had to put down warrant articles that we might propose. One warrant article was two hundred and fifty thousand for, um, somewhere in that range for, uh, capital improvements. And then the rest was to put it into funds to spread out over five years, to disperse it, to just sort of even out the tax rate. Um, and again, we just don't meet the criteria of emergency. Emergency would be your roof fell in and you need to expend money for things like that. Um, so, you know, it went really well. The judge was great. Um, you know, I just wanna kinda give you guys the, you know, this is the wrap up. Um, so there will be, um, any special meeting, um, we'll just go into our next one in March. Um, we will, of course, in turn, this will reduce what we end up asking for. You know, that's kind of the way it works, it's, you know.
Could I ask a favor?
Sure.
Just a, uh, with the website, we can update the website with information.
Sure.
Maybe a quick, a couple sentences.
Sure, absolutely.
And just email the link, the link on the website. Whatever, whatever you wanna say, that will get it out to the voters.
Okay. Yeah, perfect. Do you guys have any questions or any?
Newspaper was Karen Alora, obviously, who made front page on the, uh, Manchester Union.
Yeah, it was a little, the article was a little biased, a little misinformation. Um, the school district was at no point trying to retain the money. It was just, it always goes back to the voters, it's just how that happens. Um, you know, I wanted to make sure that was clear to people that, you know, this isn't us trying to do anything. This is us just trying to give as many voters the option to make that decision. Um, again, you know, the RSA's are what they are.
Yeah, but this way you can put the, the accurate message out on our website.
Okay, perfect.
On a personal level, on that subject, you saw the email sent to Dwayne.
Yes.
Can you just get back to me as to how we're gonna handle that? I mean, I don't care if it's.
Yep.
Waiting until we set the tax rate or if there's something, a mechanism that we can work with.
Okay, yeah.
So it pleases the treasurer and everything else.
Yeah, I, I will follow up. I know Dwayne, uh, is out of the country.
Oh, okay.
Uh, he's on vacation with his family.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I was gonna touch base with you tonight, but I, I will see what I can find out, but definitely by next week, somebody will get back to you.
Sure, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming in and letting us know.
Thanks.
I'm Katie McDonald. I'm with the Library Board of Trustees. There are three issues that we just want to, um, register with you guys. Um, one is about, uh, as you know, the, the library's being painted and washed and many other things. And, uh, as you know, they've taken down the sign, the big sign, and it's rotted completely. So, we're, uh, we just want, I think, Mike and I had a conversation this week in the hallway, but, um, we would just like to know what's gonna happen with that, replacement of that sign.
We haven't really got a, an ad hoc committee to go look at the sign, but Dave saw, thought the sign was unrepairable. It was basically the way they did the wood last time, they reversed one of the panels.
Yeah, at least one portion of it is.
Right.
And I had contacted somebody, had that chance to talk with these guys yet about repairing the sign.
And, um, I haven't had time, like, the stencils supposedly are somewhere downstairs in the library, so I was gonna try and get some time to look for those stencils. Okay.
But if anybody has any free time and wants to go rummage and look for them, that would be great as well. Um, so, yeah, so we are, uh, we are thinking about it and, um, I do have somebody that's willing to repair the sign.
Lovely. Just wanna, and that's one sign. The second sign is there's a lovely little sign on the school street side that apparently is running into disrepair as well.
Oh, I haven't seen that one.
Yeah, so heads up on that, that that's coming down.
I saw that, there's bolts are getting rusted in the paint that's coming off. I saw that myself.
Yeah, so, just, um.
Yep.
Back to you, but it's, but we, we just want you to know that it's, that it's going downhill. Um, so that's the signage issue. Uh, the, on Old Home Day, um, the last event that took place in the Common area was the Art and.
Art and Commerce, right.
And you had sent an e- an email out to us, I think, that suggested we close the library on Saturday. The library has hours until two o'clock on Saturday. And there was a concern about, if I remember correctly, this email talked about a concern of the public using the restroom.
That was one of the concerns.
Okay, and there may have been others. Uh, we'd like to know what, what your recommendation is this time and is, is there really a septic problem and should we be concerned?
Well, the thing is, um, there is a potential septic problem.
Uh-huh.
Uh, I'll give you one example. The restrooms were open here and Monday morning, we had a problem with plumbing. The, the actual.
After, after event, right.
And the thing is, um, I can imagine, say, let's say, two hundred, two to three hundred people using the facility maybe twice a day.
Yeah.
Um, that could overload the septic system and that would put not only that building out of order, but over, but this building out of order because they share the same septic.
Because shared, yeah.
Right, and that was one of the concerns. So the thing is, uh, we had asked the, the chairman of the Old, Old Home Day to basically create porta potties to include a handicapped access.
Sure.
And that's already in action.
Okay.
And he's got the funding to do that.
So.
And so we're recommending, that was one of the reasons we wanted it closed. The second reason was security.
Yeah.
Because after the library, no hours are closed, that library has this town hall is wide open for people to walk through it.
Right.
And we don't want that to happen.
Right.
And people were walking, we get information, people were walking through and flipping through the books and going to different sections of the building that they might not normally, you know, if you guys are in there. So, uh, we didn't think it was a good idea to have all these people from especially different towns walking all through that building.
So, our, our question is then, is, is that your recommendation for Old Home, Home Day as well?
Yes.
And we can certainly work with that, we just wanna know formally what.
I think it would be.
We're, we're, we're actually closing this building and we're, we made the recommendation, I made it through the library, the library.
Yeah.
To go to the board and make the same recommendation.
Yeah.
She should've made that same recommendation.
Yeah. Yep, okay, and, uh, okay, and then finally, we would wanna make you aware of the fact that we are, um, making the library director's job currently held by Mary Jor into a full-time position.
I'd like to defer that for now. Because we're just, we're on the agenda, we're gonna talk about that.
Thank you.
And we gotta host for you, a lot of, a lot of detailed information we'll talk about with that.
Very good.
Okay, so we'll defer that and we'll continue on. Okay, third row.
No, also.
Okay. Last row. Chief, Chris, also, okay, and Don, yes.
I'm on the, uh, Old Home Day. I'm not on the committee, I'm a citizen there, but we have the three toilets and they're gonna be, the porta potties be right out here, uh, for arts on the common. We blocked the bathrooms off there. We were in the vestri, the, the entry there, but no one could have access to the, uh, the bathrooms. We literally blocked the doors and so that they were never used during Arts on the Common.
That's correct.
And as far as, uh, for Old, uh, Old Home Day, the handicap and two regular, uh, porta potties will be purchased. Along that lines, you'll be receiving all addresses in Dunbar, our, our mailer. We've got a good lineup of, uh, of, uh, people coming and, uh, that'll go out this week. Ian and I are working on that with the post office and, uh, hopefully it's gonna generate a lot. We've got our signs up now, so, and banners, so, uh, we hope to have a good turnout. Chief of Direct Traffic and, uh, okay, anything else? I think, uh, that's about it.
Thank you, Don.
Yeah.
John gave us a good, uh, rundown last week, two of the, some of the logistics behind it.
Right.
I think, uh, Chief's already, uh, on board what needs to be done for that day. Okay, I'm gonna close public comment, bring it back to the board, go right to the agenda.
Paul. Paul, come here, on sixty-five Kimball Pond Road. Uh, you know, we.
I got your email, we read your email.
Right, you, you know, you know, it's a nuisance issue with the shoe pit down there. Right, that we've been dealing with, really, what, eight years it's been excessive, like air, you know, it's every day, you know, and it goes on for hours and hours.
I did some research on this and I visited that area and I visited the former prom area now on Off Ray Road. It seems like, it seems like one has shifted just to the other.
To the other.
And, uh, and then I talked to Chief about his concerns and I talked to the forest, you know, a member of the forestry, the ones who actually controls that property. And we, I hear loud and clear, but your concern is the, the noise.
The noise, it, it's a nuisance. I mean, it goes on for hours. I came back from a weekend away, Father's Day weekend, these guys, him and Richard next door, they were like, we gotta do something. This went on all day Saturday afternoon, all day Sunday afternoon. Uh, you know, we hear, you know, we expect to hear, I'm a hunter.
Right.
I got twelve guns myself. Uh, my agenda is hunting, that's, you know, and, uh, I go across the street and hunt and back and bury's, uh, bury a lot of lucio's land. And, uh, you know, we're in the country, we expect to hear shots once in a while. Somebody, everybody's got land, you know, and, and all rights, like I said, I'm a hundred yard range, it might, you know, make a berm.
Right.
Right, so, you know, we expect to hear shots, but, you know, we don't wanna hear military shooting all day long. It's, it's horrible, it's beyond, and you don't even know who's down there, you know, and what if something happens down there? Like, say, say it's an accident, you can't even get a text on it, you can't send a text, you can't call. Once you get past, uh, the power lines, you start coming downhill by this house, you lose all cell service. You know, what if something were to happen? What if a father and son, father and daughter were down there shooting because somebody told them they can? I mean, you, you gotta have some kinda precautions that, uh, I mean, you should at least have, if you're gonna let people shoot down there, you gotta have a perimeter marked that there's, it's a live shooting range. And you're hoping people are shooting in the, in the right direction. So I'll back up just a little bit, let me talk for a few minutes. I'll try not to be too long.
No, you're doing good.
Uh, I moved here in two thousand and six, I bought, um, Dave, Dave and all's brother's house.
Right.
Uh, so, you know, it was night, I asked the realtor, I said, what, what goes on down there? It's just a town sandpit. And that's all town land, town forests, I said, this is great, right, terrific. And, uh, there's only gonna be twelve, there's twelve houses on the road, there's never gonna be anymore. So I started exploring, I'm a runner, you guys seen me run around town, and I started taking this path from the dirt part of Kimball Pond, running towards the pit. That was my regular, regular route, I'd run up, run up the road and right to my house. Well, around, it started like after they started logging down there, 'cause nobody was shooting there the first few years, right? There was a few years, it was, it was quiet, I never heard any shooting that I remember. And, uh, I was running from that way into the sandpit one day, and some guy's setting up with rifles. I'm like, so I stopped, you know, that was two thousand and ten, way back then, I smiled enough that I, I'm not gonna run this route anymore, right? Shooting here, committing suicide if somebody, if the timing was right, right? So a- after that guy logged, it seemed to get worse and worse every year. And it just goes, it doesn't matter, winter, you know, I'm, I'm home all day, my wife's retired, I'm home all day, I work from home. You hear it, you know, it is no special times. Sometimes it sounds like people are after work, you know, it, it just goes on. So, uh, so anyway, I don't know what happened and why, because from what I hear from Keith, you know, years later, when I got to know him, he said, oh, yeah, we already, we, I already had one of these meetings where they, they shot it down and then they started just shooting again. So I don't know what happened there because. Well, I can, I can speak to that. Keith Morgan, uh, one seventy-three Kimball Pond Road, uh, first resident there on that stretch, bought my property from Emily Nichols years ago. Um, and there was a problem years ago.
You're the red house?
I'm the red house, the key. There was a problem years ago, um, with trash and shooting and whatnot. Uh, Cy was the road agent at the time, Cy owned that, and, uh, came to the meeting, different world way back in those days, talked to the selectmen. They agreed with us. Uh, Cy put up a pipe right across, it's blocked off now with cars. Well, Jeff helped us years later and put that back up, but originally it was just like a pipe that went across. And then they posted with signs and, but I never, I never got a, an ordinance and I never thought to take it to the next level and it, and it wasn't a problem. And then, as Paul stated, years went by and then all of a sudden, at some point, it, it started to ramp up again to back to the levels that it is now. And, you know, the problem is, what I just said, is dumping trash to strange people up and down the road. Uh, we call it the library pit. Uh, the library pit gets shooting, shooting, shooting constantly. Garbage.
Okay, well, I'm gonna ask the, it's, this is on the approval of the town forest and I'm gonna ask that some, a representative of the town forest to speak on this a little bit, right behind you.
Oh, okay. Jeff Crosby, I'm, he has two other representatives. I'll get here as well. I'm the vice chairman on the committee and we've talked about this in meetings, great length, antagonized over it. Um, just to give you a quick history, the other pit they're talking about is, uh, the Stark's Pond. And we had a similar situation there, uh, neighbors were getting sick and, and it was out of control. I mean, I, I, we haul sand out of there occasionally when they do work. I told the people who were in there, where are you from? I'm from Manchester, I'm from Litchfield, you know, we come up here to shoot. It wasn't like residents coming in, because most of the residents have a place they can shoot on there, because they acreage and all that. And they were basically out of town people and they would leave trash, bring items in to shoot, shoot the heck out of them and leave the carcasses there or whatever. So, no, I saw it this weekend, I thought it was rather clean, but why was it clean? Well, that, the Stark's Pond pit, we put the signs up.
Right.
And the police used to qualify themselves there and the town forest said, hey, listen, we know you qualify there, you can go down to the Kimball Pond pit and do the same thing. So the police moved basically from the Stark's Pond pit down there with our permission to do their thing. We didn't give anybody else permission to do it or anything else. And it has evolved. And again, we go down as a town, 'cause I'm also the road agent, and we haul materials out of there for little projects and stuff. And when I see people there, I ask them the same question, curiosity, where are you from? I've never run into anybody from Dunbar down, not to say they don't go down.
Understood.
But they're all out of town people that come there and, and I'm sure it's like anything else, there's probably a little network. They know someone, know some, some of the others. Ninety percent of the time the people park outside the gate and walk down, and so they earn it a little bit, because it's, it's a pretty good.
Quarter mile.
Yeah, it's a pretty good quarter mile.
Yep, I saw that.
And the unfortunate part is, these people do not pick their shells up. Whatever they shoot for a gun, they leave the shells completely littering the ground in targets and propane tanks.
I thought it was just paved red. I'm sorry, I thought it was just paved red.
But I mean, it's just.
With those little.
They do, and like empty cardboard boxes from the shells and the plastic boxes. Hey, anybody you ask, don't leave a mess, they all pick their stuff up and bring it out. So I don't know how this stuff ends in, but it does.
But I wanna say thank you to you for at least picking it up.
Yeah, well, we, we went in to haul some gravel up for a little project in the neighborhood and we ended up cleaning the debris out of the gravel and stuff like that. So it is an ongoing issue and it has ramped up considerably.
Anyone else from the forest?
No, he's doing fine.
He's doing fine, okay. Now, Chief, Chief, Chief was up.
Shells where you're working.
I'm gonna ask, do you have any comments, Chief?
Yeah, bring it up, jump in the road.
Chief, do you have any comments?
Yeah, the day we went down there to, to do it was remarkable. I called a lot of stuff out of there in my pickup truck, going down with my qualification stuff, car doors and just jumped out there.
Okay, Chief, could you comment on how effective you think the Ray Road sign, no shooting, has been?
Well, I gotta say, I was very skeptical when they put it up there. I, uh, I thought that we would be down there pretty frequently, you know, with complaints of shooting down there. I didn't expect the sign to last. I was roaming on all counts. The sign's still there, I don't think it's been shot up and, uh, we haven't, we haven't received, I haven't been to a call for shooting down there since the sign.
Sir.
The, uh, signs used to get ripped down all the time, no shooting.
Okay.
Ed White went down it with a big tall step ladder.
Okay.
So they can't reach it. So the sign stays in there.
But the thing is, I noticed there were no bullet holes in there, that wasn't good.
That's right.
Okay.
It's too high up.
Um, just, just one more thing, um, a couple of my officers were poking, poking around at some of the forums, shooting forums, and they noticed that, that that place was listed with an address to, um, you know, to be able to, uh, use your GPS to get to. So there are a lot of out of town people that, that come to.
Now, can I ask you guys, um, is it something that we, if we vote to, um, you know, work on getting signs up down there, can we, um, speak to those forums after to get those listings taken off, do you think, or?
We will post on it.
'Cause I, I would think that, you know, if we do go that road and be smart to get them off, 'cause as Jeff said, mostly these people are from Manchester and I've heard that, you know, down at Wildlife Sports and stuff, they're actually sending people. I think it's, I think it's actually gonna be quite a bit harder to turn from this one as opposed to that one, just because of proximity to Manchester.
I thought it was gonna be impossible to, to stop that down there. Well, we're very difficult anyways and, you know, I was surprised that, um, they held a lot of work.
But I wanna reiterate what these neighbors saying, I've, of course, lived there my whole life and people used to go down there to site in their guns once a year, twice a year.
That's right.
It wasn't a big issue.
Two shots.
Wasn't that loud, wasn't that long. Now they're going with weapons that they can shoot several hundreds or even thousands of rounds in an afternoon and several different calibers, 'cause you can hear the different sizes. And my land directly a butt stat, my son's does, he called me and contacted me, but I said, we gotta do something about last fall. The bottnicks actually approached me, they live, the horse farm, um, north of that, or actually, I guess it's south of that property. They've contacted me last fall as well as this year and said that they think there's something that needs to be done. So it's obviously affecting, uh, our neighborhood pretty heavily when they're shooting down there for hours. I don't think anybody in this town minds a little shooting, 'cause it's, it's everywhere. But I think that we do need to post it as a town and, uh, and, you know, obviously, the police department, you know, has all rights to go down there, I think, and, and.
Yeah, they, the police department, they, they usually announce ahead of time when they're gonna do target, uh, qualification, ahead of time. They usually come in, especially.
See, I had no idea, I had no idea that they were going.
It would've been good for us to know when we ran across.
But that's, but that's twice a year though, I mean, it's not a, it's a long grainer.
Right, right. But, I mean.
Not every Sunday.
I'm a member of Pioneer, you know, I might go there six times a year, pay a hundred fifty dollars, so every time I go, it's twenty-five bucks. I don't care, but it's, it's safe, I don't irritate my neighbors and that's, you know, I don't, like I said, I don't mind hearing a shot, you know, somebody, who knows, somebody shooting a rat in a, you know, chicken coop or whatever, you know? Yeah, I, I hear, you know, Barry's, uh, silo shoots out there in the field, and it's into the banking, but, you know, it's their, it's their land, but it never goes on. I mean, we hear night shooting, toes long pond, I'll never understand that, but, you know, that's, that's a whole nother issue. I mean, it, it never lasts long, it's a couple of shots.
I noticed last fall, and I don't know how they're doing it, but it seems like some of them are shooting down there right at dusk and night. I don't know how they're even seeing on target. I think they're right at dusk.
I think they, you know, see the muzzle flash or something. And, you know, I think a lot of this has, as the ARs have, you know, been more common, I think that's, a lot of it is, it's, it's, you know, I can tell, you know, and, I, you know, everybody's got one now, you know, except for me, but, uh, you know, they, they just go down there with, you know, thirty round clips and go on for hours and hours and, you know. We don't know who's down there either, you know what I mean? You just.
I think we all agree.
Yeah, I think, Paul, do you have any comments?
No.
Mostly. If I could say one more. Absolutely. Uh, I am, I am really good friends with a, uh, trial attorney in Manchester, you know, through the running community, I've been friends with him for years. He's married to, uh, a senior DA here in the state. Uh, we, we talked about it one time, pretty legal advice, you know, he said, whoever owns that property, if something were to happen down there, is a hundred percent liable. He goes, just like if somebody goes in your yard, breaks their neck in your pool. He said, there's nothing you, if they know about it, if they know people are going down there and not doing anything, not taking precautions, so it's a good, you know, that's something for the town to think about, you know? I'm, you know, it's, it's just, it's just good, good advice, you know? It's, it's just free advice, you know?
All right, I, I think we're gonna absorb everything, take it into consideration, the thing is, um, I think we're gonna make an action on this, I don't think we're gonna make it right tonight, I think within two weeks we're gonna make an action on this. Uh, we hear it loud and clear, we got input from the police, got input from residents, from the people who own it, and, uh, I'm getting the feeling that we just don't want people shooting down there on a regular basis, open to the public ear route. Go ahead.
I just wanna clarify something.
Okay.
Town owns the property.
Correct.
The town forest oversees it and manages it.
Yes, but I, I value your input.
But I don't know what I mean, it, it's all town thing.
No, I know, it's. No, I know, it's, it's owned by everybody. But the thing is, uh, it's nice to have people pick up the trash down there too.
Oh, yeah, no, it is.
It's, it's non-current use, right? It's, it's just town property that everybody can use from outside of town.
Right, but the thing is, uh, we have to look at some options for how we want to pursue this. And I think, uh, I think we're, we got enough information where we can go on forth. You know, I mean, a little, we have to do a little research how we want to either do an ordinance or just put up signs. And signs have worked before in another side of town.
Right.
And so, I think we're gonna end up doing something, but, uh, we're gonna, it'll be at the next meeting we'll make a motion, a decision.
Right, he had an issue with the guy shooting on, uh, over your house.
Well, that was, that was.
Because there was so many people down at the pit, the guy decided to go and, uh, that was on, uh, Phil Nichols property.
Well, the thing is, uh, you know Martha Ray's property, just to give you a quick. I think some hunters came up to it and they said, "This property," and I told Martha Ray, "Go back to Massachusetts." And like, she's a, she's a long, was a long time resident here for, forever. In the honor of a property shooting.
This kid was polite. He, I don't know how smart he was, because of the direction he was firing in. And normally I would just call PD, but in this case it was something I felt needed to deal with. And I went up and talked to him very politely. Bill had always, has always had me watch his property. And the, and the kid said he was sorry and he allowed.
Okay, any final comments on the subject before I move on to the next subject? Chief?
I, I don't know that you can, um, you can have an ordinance. I, I don't think the IRS says we'll buy a cream, nor do you. You can, you can post it.
That's, but, yeah.
You're okay doing that.
You could create a restriction from that area, so people aren't shooting. And then drop in at Wildlife Taxiderm, let them know that, you know, uh, they're not tolerating it now and they're patrolling it. Even if they're not, uh, at least if you drop the bullet, because I see a few of them, it's, it's two guys that work there, the gun department that.
Yeah, I think that's what's happening there, they're sending a lot of people to Dunbar.
We could charge for it if anyone.
I'm not going the other.
Yeah, they really would appreciate that.
I don't think the money's gonna make it.
Just, okay. In other words, uh, just when the town forest, you get three members here, you guys would have no issue with putting a sign up like along Ray Road?
No.
Okay.
Primarily, no.
Okay.
We have a meeting coming up. August first.
August first.
That'll be next week.
Okay.
So I'm sure we'll talk about it at our meeting.
Yeah, if you guys want to give us your findings at our next meeting, that way we'll.
Be in a, in a, in a, in a, right?
I just want to make sure that the police department doesn't get shut off for their area that they qualify in, that's all.
No, that's, we're gonna take that into consideration too. And I think it's, as I said, twice a year, and I think it's the police department is always, always, let us know ahead of time when they're gonna be shooting. And, uh, I think, uh, we can put a notice on the, on the website that they'll, or they'll be, so at least you'll know who's going down there. You don't have to panic.
I think I'd rather, if we're gonna be notifying the public, I think I'd rather be notifying just a few individuals than making it up.
But whatever, we'll, we'll work something out, so the thing is, uh, but the thing is, again, I don't want to shut the police department out either.
Oh, no.
But we have to get a common sense solution to, uh, reducing the noise, uh, annoyances. I'm with you.
Myself, I don't, I don't even think that the police department should have to notify, I mean, their cars are gonna be there. So, um, I'm thinking that they, they don't need to notify.
Yeah, but, again, they don't do it every Sunday afternoon.
I knew they were doing it, but, you know.
But you guys may practice there on occasion that isn't part of your qualifying. So that's why I'm saying, I don't think you need to notify, it's the police department, the cars are gonna be there.
No, if I see a, if I see a car.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna be an issue.
I don't think anything, it's gonna be minimal too.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for coming in, sharing that, and, uh, we'll, uh, try to get something on the, uh, healthier way next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Yep.
Library.
Oh, her again?
Yeah, her again.
We're such a bother.
What Lean did, Lean, Lean actually looked at the, uh, she gave us a spreadsheet.
Yes.
Of the cost, did you see the spreadsheet?
Yes, yes.
Great. And my question is, when do you want to make it full time?
I believe, I, we had hoped that August first would be the answer, but it's clear from the Health Trust, uh, that benefits couldn't be secured before September first. So September first.
I think the state will go for, uh, the mandatory retirement as well, right?
Yeah, and that's if we choose to load that on as a benefit.
Oh.
Um, because, and that's, the board's gotta figure this out, which is much more complicated. But yes, you're right about that.
So the thing is, the, the issue is, can the budget afford it now and can you, do you have, right now I can allocate more money for this.
And it's not, we're not asking for more money.
Okay, no, but I mean, do you have money now to bring her full time?
Yes.
Okay, within the current budget?
Yes.
Okay. Did you, and you saw the spreadsheet, because there was the indirect costs to the town, which are not listed there.
Yes.
Okay.
So that is an Excel spreadsheet, you can change it. There are handles in there.
Thank you, it's very helpful.
Yeah, it, it's a good tool, but I didn't consider it here.
It is, thank you.
Thing is, uh, I, I support, uh, what Mary's been doing for this town. And I think, uh, making it full time would just add more value to the town. But there are, again, costs are involved, but the thing is, I think she's, uh, she's been doing a great job for the town.
Well, the, the point is that we're not making a decision regarding, uh, the person, because we're not writing a description to, to person.
Understood.
We're writing the description for the position. And the, the position of library director, as we all know, has changed enormously.
And it has been full time in the past, I understand?
No.
No.
Never, never?
Two part-time people.
Oh, two part-time.
There were two, well, yeah, part-time, two part-time people, yeah.
You know, on that, on that note, um, it looks like there's, I'm just doing the numbers quick here, because we just got this sheet. It looks like it adds about eighteen thousand dollars worth of, uh, non, non-payment expenses. In other words, healthcare, dental.
For the year, that's correct, for a full year, yeah.
Yeah, for the year, about eighteen, eight. And, um, you guys wanted to go this route instead of keeping?
Well, this is, this is really a, a, it's kind of a starting place, because we have not elected yet which of the benefits are going. This is, that's a fully loaded, uh, spreadsheet, so we may or may not go with that. And the board, you know, hasn't even seen that yet, although it forwarded to them.
But it's, you know, it's worse case, it's, it's, I mean, she's eligible for any of those benefits as a, as a full time.
Full time.
Yeah, uh, well, we have.
Regardless of, again, take Mary out of the equation.
Yeah.
If, if the library director, whoever it is, is eligible for those, we have to, like, plan for that.
Well, certainly we have to plan for it, but.
They have to apply for it, because they have their own EIN number, so they're technically in a, a government department, but they're their own.
We are our own employer, because we write the checks.
No, what, what I'm saying is, um, uh, the health benefits, as a, as a, as a full-time employee, uh, even if she lets not to take dental, well, it will save some dollars. But you gotta plan for that line.
We, we certainly do, but I think what Lean and I are trying to point out is that apparently we are, we're a, the employer.
Right, I understood.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I guess that would be a good question to ask him, is if she's full time, for example, in the mandatory retirement, would she be eligible, eligible for that? Or do you have the option to buy into it or not? Because there were some towns, like previous employees that we've hired,
Right.
worked for municipalities for years, but the town voted or were not participants of the mandatory retirement. So that's what'd be.
That's right.
Where you're heading with, you're not sure if that's a benefit that you want to offer.
That's right, yes. And, yeah, and I think that the library, that the, the board has got to be very clear in its description of the position.
Correct.
Which we have not had, we, we have a much pared-down position description, because it's a part-time, um, position, so, yeah.
Can, can I ask a question, trying to understand this?
Yeah.
By not having a part-timer there when you're doing, covering vacations and, and these type of schedules, is it gonna be much tougher on you at that point doing that?
We have, um, ad hoc people, we call on, um, to do, cover, you know, for when our director is on vacation or sick or something like that. Uh, our director will also be increasing the number of hours. She works, I think, generally about thirty-two hour a week. So she will be upping her, not the number of hours she works.
Thirty-five to forty, right?
Right, right. So the answer to your question is, um, in fact, uh, when the new director came on, the library staffing was in such a position that we reduced our payroll considerably.
Yeah, I saw that from town report to town report.
Yeah. So, um, and this is a much, much more efficient way of, of doing this. So there's not a double coverage, where we don't need a double coverage, for instance. Did that answer your question?
I think it did, and then, uh, I have one, one step further. I think that because, um, if you, if you guys, I think, voted already to have her full time, but now you're just deciding what benefits she is or is not gonna get.
Correct.
And because Lean is helping with that process to try and get her on level with what other town employees have.
Right.
I think that we should do, between the departments, the town and the library, have a memorandum of understanding to make sure that down the road, people don't get confused with that library personnel getting equivalent town, um, benefits to a town employee. I want to make sure that down the road it doesn't get muddier, because even now as we're talking about it and somebody's going full time, you guys are a whole separate department. Like the school is a separate department. And that department doesn't affect our budget for the town. It's in our overall, but it's not affected by that. And I want to make sure that between us, we have that memorandum of understanding.
Well, it makes it so, in other words, employee for the library that doesn't look at the town saying, "Why am I getting this and not this?" Because you're going à la carte right now to determine what benefit package you want to provide.
Right.
We're owning a vehicle that she can take advantage of the benefits. And so we're at your beck and call as far as what we, we can use you, use us as a vehicle to get healthcare, retirement, whatever. So you, as a board trustees, have to come up with what you want to offer.
Exactly.
And I'll give you an example.
Yes, we understand that.
As I say, they probably have to create their own personal plan.
Yeah, well, they've been all about it.
What we've been saying, yeah.
Yeah, and if we can do a cover letter, just give them kind of a memorandum, so that we will have it for our side, you guys will have it for always, so that, um, take Mary right out of the picture, if you were hiring somebody else, somebody without as much experience, um, to replace her someday, you may want to offer somebody to start less benefits and then, you know, bring them up.
Yeah, we're, and we're, it's, thank you, we're very aware of that, right?
Yeah.
The, the job rather than the, to the person. We will probably always require a master degree, uh, person. And that's to the person, not, not based on what we have.
Like in our personal plan, we have steps based upon experience.
That's right. I'm not sure we're, we're gonna do that.
No, but the thing is, but, thought, just thoughts, but think of and include.
Yeah, and, and I hope, a, 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 a whole memorandum of understanding, I mean, I, our intentions to go further than that and have our own personnel plan, you know. Then we'll model it on the very well-written, um, uh, town plan, but it will be a separate document.
Oh, it's.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're not at a town meeting one day and people are confused between thinking that, you know, "Oh, we've added an additional full-time town employee." When realistically, that's its own.
Correct.
So that's, that's, that's the part I want to keep the confusion out of.
Yeah.
I think it also may confuse, uh, whoever is doing that job accidentally getting hold of the town personnel plan and thinking that they should fall under the same conditions that the town employees fall under.
And this board has had to clean up some of those issues that started, uh, way before our board, um, even this current year, so.
In fact, in fact, we have a workshop in, in planning just to continue the cleanup of our own personnel plan.
Yeah.
And it's a living document, it always changes.
Uh, yeah, and I know it gets muddy and it's, it can be ugly, so I, I appreciate.
And it's gonna be even through different departments, so we, we try and look at it all and make it work.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Understood, thank you.
Thing is, is there an action required here, it's just an FYI?
No, I think she's just bringing you up to speed.
And, and I, and I want to thank Lean too for the help that she's given us on this, because this is.
Well, we're gonna build it for our hours.
I guess we'll need to build it.
Just while you're on the, the personnel plan, and then you're gonna be addressing it again, you may want to write right into your plan a little caveat that the town librarian, the library director is not covered under the plan, they're on your own plan. And that should solve anybody getting hold of that, the, the personnel plan, from reading that into it. Good recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's something that's kind of defines the employee.
That's cool.
Yeah, and I think even when you write up your own, you know, if you have a description of that saying.
You bet.
Kind of covered on both sides.
Now, when it comes to budget time, I, I, I would anticipate, uh, you're gonna be asking a small, uh, increase.
It probably will, yeah.
Yeah. Because last year was, uh, you came in, you actually reduced your budget by, as I recall.
Yes, we certainly did.
And we weren't complaining about that at all.
Nobody complained, we didn't hear anything.
No, but I want to pull it back in.
Now, I, I, you know, if we're not looking to fill back in, I mean, as, you know, you know, you look at the budgets across the years, the whole library fundamental structure of budgeting for libraries has changed enormously, enormously, so.
Okay. I want to say thank you, and, uh, continue to work with Lean if we need help.
Yes, thanks.
Anything else on the paint job that you guys have issues with?
It's white. No, no, it's all been fine.
You didn't hear the controversy last week.
Oh, okay. I don't want to. It's all fine.
We, 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 we elected by consensus to keep with white.
It's a good thing. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, continue on. Sacha Rovinar, come on up. Close enough. How do you pronounce your name, sir?
Wanted to.
Sir, how do you, for the record, how do you pronounce your last name?
Rovinar.
Thank you. I was, uh, being corrected and I was correct.
Gotcha. I, uh, essentially wanted to, uh, seek the board's blessing to apply for a grant through the Office of Highway Safety. Um, I attended a meeting there, I think it was last week or the week before. The traffic enforcement grants that we've been getting for the last couple of years, um, there's, in some areas, been a reduction in funding. So I think this year we had somewhere around sixty-eight hundred dollars. And moving into the new fiscal year for the grant, which starts in October, uh, we're down to two thousand dollars. So it was a pretty significant reduction. But with that being said, I was informed that there is still some money available for agencies that want to get some type of, uh, speed measuring equipment. So what I looked into is actually a portable speed sign that's solar powered and can be attached to existing street signs or speed signs. The only caveat of the grant is it has to have some type of software that's capable of downloading and analyzing traffic safety data. So I looked at a few different companies and I found a pretty big disparity in costs between not only the, the unit itself, but also the radar, uh, software. And I found this one company called Trafficcom. And between the sign itself, the bracket and the solar kit, it's, uh, around twenty-six hundred dollars. hundred dollars. It's a fifty-fifty match grant, so if we were awarded the grant, the town portion would be around thirteen hundred dollars. That includes the, the software as well. And it's not, it's not a benefit for the police department, it's more of a benefit for the town.
Do we have, do we have speeding problem?
We do, yeah.
Where, where specifically, where?
We've, as of recently, we've gotten complaints on Gorampon Road, Twist Hill Road, certainly through the center of town has always been an issue, Page's Corner. Our office is under traffic up there all the time, and I'm hoping the meeting coming up will, will alleviate some of the problems.
This will, the, the sign will just be like one of those signs that you see on the side of the road, you are now speeding and lanes a little bit?
What's, the, the picture there, it's actually a fairly small unit that, what's nice about that is we can deploy it in different problem areas around town. So from week to week, we can move it. So as these complaints come in from our residents, you know, for resident calls on Gorampon that says, hey, they're speeding on this road, this date, this time, all the time, we can actually deploy it on that road for a couple of weeks. Another resident call is we can deploy it on their road. The software is Bluetooth capable, so we can download apps on our phone that pairs all the traffic data, so we can analyze the data that's coming in, so.
Chris, any chance of theft on something that small?
There, the, the bracket that it comes with, my understanding, the way it's set up, you would attach it to the street sign and then we would just have to buy some, some little padlocks and run it through, so no one could rip it off. Certainly, if someone really tried, I'm sure they could, but unfortunately, that's a risk that we run with equipment like that. But we didn't wanna get a speed trailer, I know the chief has had some experience with those in the past.
That's what we normally see on the roads.
Yeah, and they're very expensive and very cumbersome to haul around. I hear goss sound every single day, deploying the speed trailer and then picking up the speed trailer, and that's just a lot of back and forth.
They have trouble with people going around it 'cause it's out of our way in the road, make some issues with it.
Yeah, right, so this just attaches to existing street signs. I think for, for our town, for right now, I think this is a really good option, and I think that it would make a lot of residents happy if they call in a complaint. Not only can we run stationary mobile radar, but we can actually put a sign right on the road calling the people's attention of what their speed is.
Thirteen hundred our budget or your budget?
I was gonna let the chief speak to that.
Yeah, and when would, when would the grant money come in?
Uh, I think it would come in pretty quick because the original grant application deadline was back in March, but the meeting I attended, they said that there is still some money available, so I think it would be probably somewhere as early as September.
Okay, so we gotta pay for it. Well, here's the thing, I can't pay for it out of my budget the way it is right now. At this time of the year, you know, we're trying to wrap up some of our projects, I got money, four thousand dollars for a radio for Motorola to replace in, in front of cars part of our on-site radio program. I contacted the vendor and we had four thousand dollars for this radio, and they told me that they discontinued that particular radio. I can buy a low-power one, which is not gonna suit us here, or I can buy the higher-power one, which is an additional seven hundred dollars over the, over what we have buddies for the radio and installation. So, all things considered, regardless of what we don't have cash on buying the radio this year, we're just gonna, we're gonna roll what we have, we have one spare, I got a contingency plan if, you know, if, if another one bites the dust to, to get us by, we will wait until we do, we be able to. So rather than spending on a radio, you're gonna, you could use that dollars towards the, uh. You could, I asked for, I asked money for a radio, that's what I, the permission to spend it on, that's what I'm gonna spend it on. We can spend it on this if, if you guys agree, but I'm not gonna do it out of my own, 'cause that's not what I asked for.
The speeders by your neighborhood there, they're right by your house.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with the thirteen hundred dollars, instead of muddying the water with the radio, is there a chance that we wanna okay this request and use it as part of our forty-four thousand we have extra?
For the building maintenance?
No.
Building account?
No.
Forty-four thousand extra one.
Uh, you have a, in your general fund there, the same, same money we were talking about a few weeks back as far as the land purchase.
Oh, you can't spend that.
No, that's, that's already, that's dedicated.
That's, that's in a trust. It's in a trust.
Oh, yeah, that's in a, that's in a, being held by the trustee of trust funds, that's not part of our authority budget.
Trustee of the trust funds for what?
For land purchases.
Land purchases, it's, it's a capital reserve that was set up for that.
Oh, there's forty-four thousand, we have.
Just for what it's worth, this, we've got the extra money as in addition to our equipment line, it's not a, it, it, it's not a warrant article or anything like that, so.
Oh, yes, okay.
It's, it's part of the overall budget. Again, I choose not to do that without your blessing because I asked you for a radio, you gave me a radio, and this is something different, so I'm. Next year, you may have to come back and ask for a radio again. Well.
So it's listed as equipment?
It, it's under the equipment line, I, I'm not planning on replacing the radio until I do another, do another vehicle, probably in two, two thousand twenty.
And then they'll include in the vehicle cost.
Yeah, yeah, be part of the whole vehicle line, but I, I think it's moved right now to, to pass on that, what he's saying, he's got the money in the budget now.
I don't have a problem, I, I was looking at Lean, 'cause I was gonna ask her what we have there for monies, 'cause we keep getting a report, but we got the latest one.
Two weeks ago, yeah.
And it hasn't really changed much, so it's easier if it comes out of your budget.
Yeah, the, the way the chief is looking for is just a thumbs up from us.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with that, I don't either.
I think we got consensus to go with it.
And that's only if we receive the grant, there's a chance we may not.
No, but the thing is, not the venture, not the game here.
Right.
Okay, and since I got you here, the one August meeting with the DOD?
Yep.
Location, exact location at Page's Corner?
I suggested to them to park at the dentist's office, and I figured a good standing spot to observe the, the intersection would be that dirt area right next to the dentist's office, there's plenty of room for us to stand there in a year.
All three succumbent will be in attendance.
Perfect, good, I think that's great. And I know DOT, probably one or two people from DOT, as well as representatives from Central New Hampshire Regional Planner, will be there, and I'm, I'm anxious to hear what DOT has to say. As you all know, Central New Hampshire did that justice turn movement and clearly accorded the results to the board. And from that, DOT did some type of analysis, and they're gonna present what they think is a good solution, so I'm kinda curious.
Lean, just give us copies to bring to that.
Excellent, good.
Multiple copies, to make sure they have a copy.
Chief, will chief be there? Yeah, okay, and, Rowdy, now you're invited if you wanna.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it, but you're in good hands.
Okay, well, it's a state road too, I mean, it's not.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it'd just be more of a personal interest thing, but I'll, I'll hear back.
Chris, can I ask a question about that speed thing?
Sure.
You mentioned stop signs, a lot of times a stop sign, people are slowing down to stop, will that be able to be attached to like a speed sign or a sign that's just along the route?
Yeah, the, the intention, I, I believe that the capability of that particular sign is thirty-five miles an hour or less, so what we would be looking to do is, you know, the four corners where the intersection is thirty-five miles an hour, I'd have to check the state, as we talked about, to get permission to post it there, but yes, I would be looking to post it on actual speed limit signs.
Oh, okay.
And then that would hopefully catch people's attention, so.
And finally, I just wanna say, you heard the comments that a lot, a lot of, some of the public here tonight does, they do not wanna restrict your shooting, and I'm, I'm grateful for that, and so, but the thing is, I think we gotta come to a common sense solution, so we'll probably be talking about it next, in the next meeting.
And I think you were right on point there, I don't think we have to notify all kinds of people when you guys are going.
What you have, what you have in the past.
We've made some notifications, yeah.
Okay, anything else for us, John? Any questions for members of the board, no? Good, okay, go forth and get the grant.
Thank you, I'll drop it in the mailbox.
All right.
Do you need, do they, do they signature?
This is just the application.
Application?
Yeah, so if it gets awarded, then I'll, I'll come back with the contract.
Okay, all right.
And you can sign for about forty minutes.
Yeah. Flag them all.
Okay, I need someone, you're also, thank you very much, thank you, come in. Okay, I got a motion from other members.
I'll make a motion for our, say, thirty-one, colon, ninety-five dash B, number new number three, paragraph B, to accept a donation from the old home day committee in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars.
Second, and discussion, Lean, do you have that money in, checking hand?
We do, and the whole purpose of bringing it to the board's attention is 'cause it's unanticipated revenue and they have a limited budget, so every time they put all that hard work and effort into this day's event, they try to recoup any kind of additional money that would help give them additional funds to, you know.
Were you able to help them last week with the additional funding that John asked about?
I did, unfortunately, the auditor said that anything that is from prior year has to lapse to the general fund, it's not allowed to be carried over from year to year. So right now, all they have is this hundred and fifty, the board's already accepted twenty-five, they may get another twenty-five before the, the day of the event, so they're looking at just a little under two hundred to work with.
Okay.
Will that be enough for them?
That's, that's the question.
Notice it took around four hundred last year to get that up and going, no?
No, I think, I think they were doing okay last year, but the cost this year, they're finding that everything's costing more. You know, the toilets, they're getting additional toilets, we have noticed these postcards that is an expense, the mailroom will be an expense, so a few things they're trying to really promote to get the word out, get more people, more traffic through here, and it's just costing the, the committee more money.
Has John come back to, with, say, the Irish race yet?
No, not yet, but.
Something to think about?
We do have another meeting before then, so we'll ask them to come in.
I just don't want him, uh.
We'll have one more meeting, two more meetings actually, and.
Yeah, if he needs some help, I guess just have him notify us so he can come into our meeting.
Yep.
And we can.
Okay.
Okay, a motion on, on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm gonna go to the town business now. Okay, start off with the, I got a request here, this is a ninety-one Elwick request. This is a reference to some of the work that the chief did earlier on Old Welp Thirteen and Holmes Road. Did you have a chance to read that?
I did, looks like it's a request for information from an attorney as far as the status and layout of a road, Old Holmes Road.
And they want a lot of information in five days, I mean.
No, 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 you have to respond within five days as to when you can have that information available, but the problem with that is the information that they're asking for is all land use research, that's their job, that's what, if you hire, it's, this is similar to, well, it's a dispute between two neighbors.
But I think if you just give them the layout of the road and look up if there were any discontinuances and, from there, let them research the rest.
Okay, but even finding that discontinued information, we don't, I don't, we have just the, the one list of our roads and when those roads were discontinued, but all the information's in town reports and, and that's not anything that.
Rowdy, I'm gonna ask you to, trying, you had to raise your hand, could you be of help here?
There's a file, Old Holmes Road, it's got a pretty good history of it, tells about when the town tried to discontinue the Sully portion.
Yep.
They kept the portion in front of what I'm gonna call Andy Michael's old house.
Yep.
That's still town maintained. There is the town meeting dates and the vote and all that, it's in the file. It's not an in-depth thing, but it gives you some basic information.
Right.
I've taken this, tell me if it's on my business office, sounds like it's between the Soles and the personals, they've been to court before where the previous owner was a similar situation.
Okay.
So they know whoever the players are out there, maybe the new resident doesn't know, but the Soles have a pretty good history about that, and I'm building on top of that, I got a complaint out of the blue yesterday about the way the guy, the guy, I haven't talked to him, don't know anything about it, processes some wood there, I don't know if it's for sale, to sell, whatever, and he piles it right on the edge of the road, and I guess someone going up there, it bothers them, and they refer it to a hazard, so I've gotta go talk to them about, right now, what's going on, but this has been, not the first time, this is.
No, I'll definitely respond, but it's not gonna be anything.
Yeah, I wouldn't spend a lot of time giving them information.
No.
But the thing is, it's not, they want you to provide this within five days, if you read the letter.
We can't, they can't demand us to provide it, if it's time-consuming, I will report to them as to what I feel is a fair amount of time to, you know, and that's the key.
The thing is, can we respond to email requests again, or does it have to be by a letter?
Oh, I didn't think I had my right to know.
Okay, I'd like to know that, and the thing is, make sure they're doing things by the book.
Yeah, it does say it's gonna take longer to notify them.
Right. Now, is in there a different departments that are responsible for portions of that as well?
I really, there's a lot of information on that, right?
Right, I'm sure that, this is a couple of our departments, it's not all, wouldn't all be rested on your shoulders, exactly?
No, I can delegate it, absolutely, but it's still gonna take some time, so I plan on responding, that I've received it, and that I will give her the time period as I see fit, so, not to confirm that.
All right, if you need more help on that, let me know, do you, do you think we need to consult our legal editor on this at all?
I'll have to read it again.
Okay, the only reason they're asking a lot of information is this, is this, is this should be actions by their own law court, or should be done by the town? Why are we doing their legal work, that's the question I ask, it's court. Why are we spending all these hours doing their research?
Basically, is that a valid right-to-know request?
Yes, that's what I wanna.
It almost looks like it's, the research that they're asking us to do is something that they should be doing through their.
Their own, their own employees.
Yeah, is that what you hire a land use lawyer for?
Yeah, like I said, the, the town has some of that information readily available if they wanted to come in. I actually, I actually think you should contact our town attorney because, you know, portions of that might not be under the five-day right-to-know, and I think that, you know, they could be pushing it.
We went to a lot of inquiry, a lot of work, just to see if it's a legitimate question.
Yeah, it isn't gonna take them long to review this.
No, it'll take a few days.
Anyway, so it's gonna cost less than.
Yeah.
Making a mistake.
So go ahead and reach out, please. All right, moving on. Matt Monahan has something about, I have no idea what the brown field programming, brown, brownfields assessment from EPA.
For hazardous mitigation of sites like the Tanrey and Franklin or places like that, the brownfield.
Is that like the contamination stuff? I know, I was involved with this, you know, four, five years ago, where I met with Matt Monahan, they must have had funding back then, and that other gentleman, weren't you there with me, the two of us?
I think so, yeah.
And we had to help them identify areas of potential brownfields, I guess, so we had to point out the different areas in the town that we were.
Just one on Jewett Road.
You got it.
Well, I mean, potential.
And they were like, when, when he showed, when we showed them an aerial of it, 'cause you can do Google Earth, they're like, woo-hoo, so I don't know, maybe, I don't know what the purpose of going through all this is.
Thing is, could we, could I?
All right, oh, yeah.
Good.
It's central regional planning, so they, they make a living.
Yeah.
They get these grants and then they come, get the towns involved, and that's how they make the money.
I would like, I think the building inspector may be a candidate for this, for this potential meeting, 'cause he's also a health inspector too.
Didn't you say that George Holt served?
George Holt responded to that email saying he would be interested.
Why don't we let George take the lead?
Okay.
Let's get a free lead out there.
Got it. Okay, no further actions, I think I've been consensus with that.
As a board, we're all in consensus, right, Paul, let George take the lead?
A volunteer, rabbit.
Let him report back, Paul.
George is good.
Yeah.
Okay, got a quote from, for some lighting at the transfer station, obviously something's wrong with the lighting. Lean, I have the quote, I thought it'd be worthwhile, it's a, it's a large quote, so could we get two others, or another quote or two?
Okay, that would mean that he has to reach out to a couple of other electricians.
Yeah, we'd like to just verify it.
Okay.
Okay, that would be great, and we, for the, for the board, at your leisure, please give us a status report, some of the issues going on, he's gonna, so that's an action item, Lean, please, we gotta reach out for that.
Yep.
We also had an injury at the transfer station, no medical attention required.
Actually, there was.
There was, it's changed then, huh?
Down the promenade.
Just a light.
Just two lights.
Next day to get it checked out.
Okay.
Somebody had a nail go up through one of their boots, workwear, and they didn't get the admission the first day, but the second day got some minor discomfort and had to go get it checked out.
Okay. There's that information in here for, for the planning and zoning, just an update, just so you know what's going on in town. You haven't seen that? You haven't seen that? Lean, talk about these spreadsheets, please, now.
Um, I continue to work with, uh, our CPA to reconcile the cash accounts to the town, and this would be the April and May.
Correct. And how, are they reconciled? That's the question.
Yep, yep, they are.
To the penny?
Yep, to the penny. Zero variance, and the treasurer's already signed up on it.
Oh, no, we didn't, we didn't. You got sent through. And I'm gonna do, uh, say, the same for both months, May also.
Yeah.
The gentleman still working out okay?
Yes, absolutely, yes. I think he's been very fair in billing, and I've also been able to assist him and the other towns that have the same software that are having difficulties, that he has questions, he leans on me for answers, so it works out well.
Okay, we got a, we had a legal dumping this past, uh, week on July twentieth, so there was, Zachary Drive was on, some hazardous waste was dumped. And, uh.
Off grid line?
Uh, Zachary Drive.
I think that was up there.
Yeah.
And, uh, my question. So the police called in to, uh, did we get a statement from the, uh, officer responded yet?
Yes, sorry, yeah, is that it in the back? Is that from Canterbury?
Oh, it's on the back. Yeah, that's the one I was looking for. All right, yeah. I don't, I appreciate the management of this, because it looks like the, uh, I'd like to address this in another time with the, uh, because if you read that, she wanted out forty-eight hours and he spun immediately, they're going overtime. I think that's, that's questionable management. So I'd like to discuss that with the, uh, the, uh, the parties at the, when he's here. I don't wanna discuss it further this time. So I'm gonna leave that as, as an action item. Any problems with that, gentlemen?
No, so there's illegal dumping on the road, and the resident asked us to, you know, build it within forty-eight hours?
Yeah, if you're. That's what the police officer asked him to do. So I don't wanna, I don't think it's great to discuss it this time. Bob, comment?
No, it's like he picked it up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but that, that's not the issue. It's, it's called, uh, measure time, I think, 'cause it's. Okay, I got one more item here.
Do we have the letter for, um, Donald White, is it attached to something else, or? It might be.
No, I haven't. I, yeah, we have it. I'm sorry.
That needs to be signed.
Be back with it.
And Dave's written it.
Let's see.
Oh, there it is.
Dave, that.
Somebody stuck it in there.
Okay, this is, this is a follow from last, uh, what we asked, uh, last time, to assure us you didn't, um.
Yeah, I already spoke to everybody.
So we already voted on that last week. It's a letter of, uh, signing, of an action item last week.
We're gonna save that for the best, right?
Correct.
So the step rate's increased.
All right, I got a, uh, geotechnical boring work on the, on the other transmission lines. And this is a notification, and the thing I, the thing is that they're doing in wetlands, and so the only thing I wanna make sure of that they're, uh.
They did notify D E S.
Yeah, and they're following the, uh.
The Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
So we're just one group that they have to do when they're doing the test boring.
It's more an F Y I.
Gotta set a line up higher ground, and they gotta do test borings there, geological test boring, if they haven't already done it.
Yeah.
Right down George's lane.
Okay, I'm gonna open up to public comment again. John?
Do you wanna talk on, um, personnel plan? That's still under town business?
Well, yeah, I'm gonna, the thing is, we just wanna.
Do that on our own after.
Personnel plan?
I think.
I think, uh, Bob had a.
Give the public another chance before we.
Oh, yeah. No, I don't wanna get into it at all. I just wanna set a potential date, and the thing is, uh.
Yeah, do you wanna do a workshop on it? I think it's a lot easier.
We'll get a calendar next week.
Right here, okay.
Hey, Dave, you're the, uh, I'm more flexible than you are, so you have to give us availability, and we can do it.
It's a tough time of year for me right now.
When is it a tough time of year, do you mean?
Well, winter I do still, we'll be on a lot.
So next week is the first week of August.
You wanna do it late afternoon?
The first, we're meeting already twice that day, already starting.
You are anyway, yeah.
Let's try, uh.
Next Thursday, we have a summer schedule for select, and we can make it an early evening workshop if you want to do it next Thursday.
About four o'clock?
Try and do it earlier in the week if we can. How about, are you guys available Monday night?
I've got a meeting Monday night at seven, so anytime before then.
Let's try, like, a three o'clock in the afternoon, Nick? We'll try that.
Three o'clock on July thirtieth.
The thirtieth, yeah, Monday.
Sure.
Thirtieth. Lean, can you send me a text in the morning for thirtieth?
You gotta just do the public connection of that.
Three P M? Yeah, I'll post it.
Okay, now I'll open up the public comment. Yes, sir.
Fred Ballen, Starkland. I just wanna commend the road agent on a nice job installed in the bridge on a stark farm.
So noted, and, uh, it looks really nice. It, it's gonna look nicer with a guardrail on it.
Yeah, I heard that's gonna come a couple of weeks, maybe?
Uh, um, maybe, maybe four weeks.
What is the date on that, Jeff? I know you had told us once.
They said August, but it is, pin it down until we sign the paper, and I'll recall Mondays and find out, because it'll be almost August.
Okay.
I can't, I don't know exactly what the date.
I knew you had given us a rough idea, and I.
Yeah, he, they wasn't, entertained me until we.
As a quarterly, that people have been asking me, when will the pavement be on, put on top of it, too?
As soon as we can get it done, that, we got it rest.
Okay.
We are gonna pave it, but we'll open it first. We can draw, you'll be able to draw it from this gravel. The safety issues.
I didn't realize we were paving it.
Just a short section over the bridge and an approach on each side to protect it, so it doesn't wash away in the integrity.
No, I think it's a good idea. I just didn't realize.
Yeah, no, that's something I wanna do as, as the highway department road agent, just to protect the investment.
But when it floods, why let it all go down?
Yeah, and then just normal wear and tear, maintenance, and ten, on those gravel roads, like, they go around the corner a little fast, and spin the tires and.
So, so it's warm.
Yeah, and we have an issue with that, in that area anyway, for a lot of different reasons. So just, that's all, limited amount. The surface itself, it's gravel covered now. We're gonna put a layer of pavement on that and a slight approach on each side.
Very good.
That makes sense. And that'll be, that's all we do.
But take that multiple times for plowing.
Yeah, exactly. This, this, well, if we go this far, not do it would be kinda.
Okay.
Thank you, Fred.
You're welcome.
Fred, anything else? Thank you. Sir, chief. Okay, bring it back to the board.
I, I got one more thing.
Okay.
Um, I was talking to Dan about it a few minutes ago, and I've got a little more history on it. I got a little issue that I'll, I'd like to get resolved. A number of years ago, this guy had put on Jack London Drive, who was in the logging business, and he sold his property, and he moved some, a piece of his logging equipment, some empty barrels of stuff, onto an adjacent lot. The adjacent lot happened to be in Boe. Since then, the lot is having a house being built on it. And it appears to me, I haven't done all my research, but the last time I was up there, they had moved that piece of equipment, that bunch of drums, and put it on back into Dunbar, on the side of our road, and I believe it's in the right of way. None of the neighbors have complained about it yet, which kinda surprises me. But I'd like to be proactive in pursuing this, to see if we can get them to get it out of there. It's been there a number of years.
Is the new house being built by the other owner or a brand-new owner?
A brand-new owner, but it's in Boe.
Right.
The property, the town line goes on the backside of this cul-de-sac. That house is in Boe. That's where this equipment was, on that vacant lot. And then when they, the people that purchased this lot or building the house or whoever, moved it back on the side of the cul-de-sac. And I don't, I'm gonna try to track it down and see if I can get somebody interested in moving out of there, but it's been there half a dozen years, maybe, close to that.
On the Boe side, on the Boe side.
Any part of it registerable, so we could contact, uh?
Uh, I don't, I doubt it. I didn't look at it. It's a trailer type, it's a trailer chip, wood chip, a big, large commercial wood chip. But it was a guy who sat.
Right, but I just wonder, is it, uh, registered, so we can follow up on it?
Oh, I don't know. I didn't get out, look it.
I don't know if we can get ahold of the guy.
It belonged to the company, so it's either, I don't know that it necessarily belongs to him or his wife, or however the company was dissolved, because they, they, they dissolved.
Bottom line is, I'd like to research it, and at some point, we may need the town to step in whether it's legally or whatever. I mean, it's, it is a bit of a hazard. I mean, I don't know what's in those fifty-five gallon drums. It could be empty, it could be full, I don't know.
Right.
Several.
And we know for a fact that Bo is, the builder has moved it onto Dunbar property?
I'm ninety-nine percent sure. I did not talk to anyone, because I didn't go up there until just recently.
Regardless, somebody put it there, right?
Yeah, I'm assuming, 'cause it's right where the house was being, is built, built out.
Okay.
And I'm sure, I'm just speculating that somebody said.
Is any coordination made with, uh, the Bo, any, any officials in Bo?
No, I haven't talked to them.
Okay, chief.
I just talked to Dan about it all day tonight.
It was, it was left on that property. It was there when, when the new property owner bought it. Maybe it's the responsibility of the builder to, to get rid of that. He's got no business spraying at the Dunbar, and then banning it on a public road.
Well, that's what mean, I'm gonna talk to somebody first and find out how it got there, and maybe a little more history.
We look forward to your report in about two weeks.
Yeah, and like I said, I mean, he needs some assistance, at some level.
Yes.
I mean, it was, it was on a private piece of land before.
Right.
And I believe that gentleman sold it to a gal, because she had come to check with the building department on access, like driveway permit, things like that.
You know, I hate to send the bill for disposal of that, the, the current owners.
Well, I'm sure if, if we don't get anybody that's particularly receptive to us, we may have to go through some legal notification or something, I mean.
Uh, I would like to document this with pictures, a little bit.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to find out what I can find out.
Great.
I mean, there was no one there that day to talk to on the building level. I mean, it, it might be a, it could be a simple explanation.
That they're gonna move it outwards.
Yeah, I doubt it, maybe. It didn't look.
I try to be optimistic.
Yeah, and like I said, none of the residents up there complain. I don't really know what's going on.
It's still, it's not, it's probably, as you said, it's in the right of way.
That's what I'm assuming, by looking.
Okay, any more comments?
No, let's go to.
Yeah, yeah, two weeks, so I may need some real assistance.
Okay, anything else? Nope, that's it. Okay. I'll bring it back to the board. Dave, I'll let you go.
Um, I think I'm good for now.
Bob?
Uh, I think we'll, uh.
We do have a non-public, Bob, by your request?
Yeah.
Okay. Regarding the shooting, I think we'll, uh, make a decision next week. And, all right, I like to make, have our motion, John. I'm, I'll make a motion right now that we go in non-public for RSA ninety-one dash alpha, colon three, number number two, paragraph D. Sorry, gentlemen.
I'll get your motion, Mike.
Uh, say Kaminsky, yes. Time is?
You want that door closed?
Yes, sir, please. Eight twenty-eight.
Take a recess?
Yes, eight twenty-eight.